Call or roll, please.
Trusty Capino?
Yes.
Trusty Lowry?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Carroll?
Yes.
Trusty Gailey?
Yes.
Item number one, Mr. Bosco.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one today is approval of an ordinance amending Title 12, Chapter 12.20 by adding provisions for a regulation of small wireless facilities. This is in light of the new law that allows telecommunications companies to put wireless facilities in the right-of-way. Once again, as we talked at the Committee of the Hall a few weeks ago, this is a state law, so the right for these companies to do this is already there. The villages have the ability to adopt an ordinance to try to regulate things such as permit, fees, and annual rent fees, but we cannot regulate the size of the structures or where they can and can't go. That being said, it's in front of you right now. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Call or roll, please.
I did have a question. So if they were to erect one of these towers, say, in front of somebody's house, and somebody isn't happy about it, do they have any recourse with that?
I believe so. The state law says that they can go anywhere in the right-of-way with a 45-foot pole, or anywhere on private property in either the commercial industrial areas.
You know, I don't think they're going to go on private property unless there's an extreme situation that they can't put one on public.
Steph will have the ability to review those permit applications, so if there's an instance like that, we'd bring it to their attention and say, hey, maybe there's a light pole that this could be located on instead of placing a new pole in the right-of-way.
Any idea the size of the units that they've been using?
About the size of a small garbage can.
Size were in the ordinance.
It's 1.8... It's about two foot by two foot by...
You also just said that there was no regulation as to the size of the units.
No, there isn't. And that's the thing that staff in the Illinois Municipal League was most upset about, was that we really didn't have a say in the size of the poles, the size of the units, any of that. The good news is, like what John said, is it's been our experience with companies, not saying that they can't do it their way, but when you work with telecom companies, a lot of times they'll look for an easier option, so the staff will try to guide them to the nearest existing pole. We have one application in already, and it's to put a tower, another 10-foot pole, on top of a street lamp that's on Banbury Road, I believe by Schneider Elementary. So they're, at least in that case, they are looking to put it on an existing pole already.
There is a height limitation, there is a size limitation, everything else, so... Any other discussion? Call or roll, please.
Trusty Gailey?
Yes.
Trusty Carroll?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Lowry?
Yes.
Trusty Capino?
Yes.
Item number two, Mr. Toth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two is an ordinance approving a map amendment for the property located at 110 Oak Street. This is the property located in the southeast corner of Oak Street and Adams. They're requesting rezoning from the OR Office Research District to the R1 Single Family District. This property was actually zoned R1 previous to 2005. They received a rezoning to OR during that time to allow for an office-type use. They also received a special use to allow residential on the second story. The business closed within a few years, and they've been using it as a single-family residence since. The property is closed for sale. They're looking to maintain it as a single-family residency. The fact that it were to be damaged or destroyed beyond 50 percent, it couldn't be rebuilt as a single-family home, which is why they're requesting going back to the R1 district. This has not gone to committee or the Hall or to the Operations Committee. The petitioner did request a first reading of the ordinance tonight for approval so they could move on.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Call or roll, please.
Trusty Lowry?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Capino?
Yes.
Trusty Gailey?
Yes.
Trusty Carroll?
Yes.
Item number three, Mr. Toth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number three is approval to proceed with Tesco Associates, Inc., design and build development at a cost of $17,720 in order to initiate the Riverfront Park North Plaza and Park Inchoa improvements. As you recall, this is the Riverfront Park between us and the river. The first aspect of the plan was to do the Inchoa Plaza, and some of the specifics involved with that part of the work are the development of a community gathering plaza, pedestrian connections between the plaza and nearby sidewalks, pathways and parking areas, non-structural and aesthetic improvements to the spillway, pedestrian bridge area, wayfinding signage, landscape lighting, pedestrian paving, landscape plantings, site furnishings, and other landscape features for the area known as the Inchoa Plaza, which on the last page I included a copy of the Riverfront Park Plan, just for illustration there. They would develop the design and the bid documentation, so we'd have information to go out to contractors. We did budget $25,000 for the design work and $175,000 for the construction. Once we have a plan, we will work with them. We will bring the plan back to the Village Board for approval once it's been completed.
And just one quick thing to note, that when the original plan came out, we talk about how things are always priced out at the highest, most conservative price. What this was actually worth about $300,000, according to Tesco. Staff sat with them and said, we have a more realistic budget that we put into the operating budget to share in our capital fund, so we'd like to tailor it down. So they're already working on the auspice of cutting about $125,000 off of their original estimate to get it to a good concept that's also more affordable.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. Call or roll, please.
Trusty Gailey?
Yes.
Trusty Carroll?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Lowry?
Yes.
Trusty Capino?
Yes.
Item number four, Mr. Hannah.
Thank you. Item number four is discussion about a residential electric aggregation agreement. As the Board is aware, the village has had in place a residential aggregation program since 2011. This provides residents with an option besides COMED for default energy supply, especially when that rate is below or competitive with the COMED rate. The current program is set to expire in September of this year. The current COMED price to compare is about 7.75 cents per kilowatt hour. It is estimated over the next 12 months that'll be probably closer to 7.7 cents per kilowatt hour. When we went out and got revised pricing this afternoon, which is in front of you, you can see that most of that pricing is higher than the estimated COMED price to compare over the next 12 months. The closest one was a quote from Dynegy with the 12 months at 7.72 cents per kilowatt hour. So that's really kind of almost exactly where, you know, the estimated COMED price is going to be over the next 12-month period. It could, the COMED price could actually be a little bit lower. As the Board is aware, that COMED price to compare includes the purchased electricity adjustment, which fluctuates the price by a half cent more or less on a monthly basis. So that COMED rate is really sort of a variable rate on a month-to-month basis that residents pay if they're signed up for default, default power supply through COMED. So the discussion tonight is moving forward. We have a best quote here from Dynegy for a one-year period. The other option for the Village Board to consider is to let the current aggregation program expire. That would revert the entire aggregation back to COMED for default energy supply. Residents would still be free to go out and solicit their own individual quotes if they like. It appears at this time, like I said, it's really variable, but that the COMED price over the next 12 months might be a slight tick less than the best aggregation rate that we could procure. If the Board elects to do nothing and let the aggregation expire, then we would simply regroup sometime probably in April or May of next year and get new pricing at that time.
So then, really what we're looking to do is just maybe let it expire and let COMED take over?
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, they're the default energy supplier, so this is, you know, always been an opt-out program. So residents are free to go into the program or go back to COMED anytime they want. One of the advantages that was discussed last time was having a fixed-price option for residents as part of an aggregation program versus the variable rate from COMED, which will fluctuate to the positive and the negative by half a cent on a monthly basis.
Well, if COMED's going to be cheaper, then I think that for the same electrical power, we should just let it expire and default to COMED.
And that's the tough thing to predict right now. It's not a fixed certainty, you know, what it's going to be over the next 12 months. The best estimates are that it'll be slightly cheaper. So I guess the question is, do we go with the default COMED energy supply for the next, basically, 12-month period, or do we lock in an aggregation rate and have, at least have an aggregation rate option available for residents to consider?
Bill?
Yes.
Is there any wisdom to maybe going for a 24-month contract and getting a cheaper rate?
We talked about that a little bit. There are some supply charges that are decreasing in a couple of years. That's why you see those rates going down a little bit. The suppliers know that. So essentially, you'd be sort of spreading out the savings a little bit there, yeah. That's why we thought a one-year, if the Board was going to consider a one-year, would make the most sense at this point.
The truth is, is that COMED, according to our consultant, even COMED's rate is expected to drop again next year. So that 7.6 for the two years looks better. Why not go for two years? COMED's rate's probably going to be just as low the following year or two, is what we're looking at.
Well, that's my point. I mean, if COMED's going to be lower, then why...
Well, there is an offsetting factor also, is there not, other than, as we discussed before, what do they call it? A, is it an NEG or what was the...
The PEA charge?
PEA.
The PEA charge.
So, I mean, essentially, what Bill and I, when we talk about this, this is, it comes down to two things. If you keep the aggregation program, you're giving residents 12 months of a set price. So I'm just going to use simple math. We'll call it 7.7. That stays flat. Everyone knows what they get for 12 straight months. With COMED, it's something around 7.9 for the next eight months, and then for four months, it'll go down to, let's say, 7.2, 7.3, and it'll ultimately be about 7.6, 7.7. So it'll be either a tick lower or about the same as what we anticipate. The rate will drop eventually, but it'll be higher for eight months, and then it'll go drop significantly lower. The PEA charge is that half cent. Six of the last seven months, it's been in the residents' favor, but that doesn't mean it's always going to be in the residents' favor. So let's say the PEA charge, they give you a credit of .3. Basically, if your rate is 7.5 per kilowatt hour, then you're only paying 7.2. So six of the last seven months, it's actually, the COMED rate has been even better. But that's not a guarantee that it's always going to be like that. So it's hard to know what that PEA charge is going to do. So what Bill's saying is, we always take a look at COMED as like what we expect the average to be
Right.
over time.
Right. Someone could play the, you know, get a little bit better deal for the next eight months, and then voluntarily leave the aggregation, go back to COMED for the remaining four months, if that summer rate next year turns out to be a lot lower than the, than the best quoted price from Dynegy.
Is there any cost to the village to have the aggregation agreement in place?
No.
So, I mean, the residents could use COMED if they want. This just gives them another option of having a fixed price.
Correct, basically.
Yeah, this locks them into a program that they would have to opt out from, as opposed to just reverting back to COMED, and then a resident can always opt into whatever program they want, and then when the village goes back out. That's the thing. So we can go right back, and every year, we could just solicit pricing again to see if the prices have gotten better than COMED, and we can always restart the aggregation program.
But we're not picking, we're picking who the provider will be, but we're not saying that the energy provider in North Aurora is going to be Dynegy unless you opt out, correct?
Well, it depends on how you want to go. We have to, our decision tonight, our motion tonight, is to go with...
With the program.
Dynegy, which has the lowest so far, or not go with Dynegy, so therefore, we'd all go revert back to COMED.
Right.
If you go, exactly.
That's our motion, has to be one or the other.
Yeah.
Wait, so I'm confused. So we're actually picking Dynegy, and the residents would have to opt out of it?
If that's what you wanted to do tonight. So you have two options in front of you. You either stay in the aggregation program, which case, Dynegy is the best price. So yes, you would be authorizing me to enter into a contract with Dynegy. If you wanted to revert back to COMED, you don't have to take any action whatsoever, and we automatically just revert back to COMED.
I understand, but as a homeowner, you're not picking my energy supplier for, or we're not picking their energy supplier.
We are. If you pick, if you pick the aggregation program, we are picking the energy.
It's an opt-out program.
Yeah.
So everyone is automatically enrolled in the program. They're given letters and communication from Dynegy ahead of time that's saying, if you don't want to opt into this program, you can just mail this card back, and you will be, you won't be enrolled. You'll stay with COMED. It wouldn't affect people that have gotten an individual agreement with a different power supplier on their own. They're able to sort through which accounts are with different providers already, and which accounts are with the aggregation or with COMED. So anybody at any point in time during the year could opt out of this rate and go back to COMED for default energy pricing supply, or even solicit on their own with a different energy provider. So the question is, do we want to maintain, you know, an aggregation program for the upcoming one-year period, and it's obviously, with still, by ordinance, is an opt-out program?
Let me just recheck these numbers. So it looks like Dynegy and COMED are pretty much about the same rate, except...
Over a 12-month period, yes.
Right. But then, I think you also mentioned in eight months, the COMED rate will go down to 7.1, was it?
Right now, it's about seven, it's going to be about 7.9, beginning in the fall, all the way through the winter into the early spring. Next summer is when it's estimated to go down to, and it's really hard to say, 7.2, 7.3, something.
I don't understand. I mean, what's more beneficial to the village, to stay with the aggregation or to revert back to COMED? I mean, it's pretty much 7.7, 7.7 at this point.
Yeah.
What would be the benefit to remain in versus letting it expire? Because to me, I don't see any difference.
If the, okay, so if you were going to say there was an advantage, and honestly, both ways, they're pretty equal. If you stay in the program, what you do is you're just locking someone into a rate for a year. So there's no fluctuation in the price every month, even though we know the blended average is going to be about the same.
But it looks like the trends are trending down. So are you saying with COMED, we have an occasion for additional savings potentially?
Yes, over...
Also, if we go with Dynegy now, which is lower, you know, comes COMED along next summer and it drops, everybody can drop out of Dynegy and go with COMED.
That's a good point. That's true, yeah.
At no cost. So, you know, it's one of, you know, one or the other.
Well, maybe we should go with Dynegy.
If we get out of the program now, we also can just reevaluate the program. There's no penalty for the village to not be in a program, so we can always evaluate it six months or a year from now and start the program back up if prices in the, if competitively drop.
From a resident perspective, the simplest thing to do is revert back to COMED, because I know there is a lot of confusion. I've had several residents call and say, what's going on? Why don't I have COMED? Did somebody do something? You know, I think that it would probably take a lot of effort off of staff to not have to explain this. I don't know how many times you guys have to.
I agree. And how many of us check it? I've never checked rates.
I've got a feeling there'd be just as many questions of, why did you...
I've never checked rates, so I'd rather have a fluctuate with the market, and if it's COMED...
Yeah, that's a good point. How will the people that are on Dynegy know that COMED dropped their prices?
But COMED hasn't dropped their price yet.
Right.
Lower than Dynegy.
I'm just saying, who checks? So after eight months, I guess you have to watch it and opt out.
Yeah, the other side of the coin is that we go with them. Dynegy's the lowest now.
My hunch is that, yeah, that they could save with Dynegy.
No, I, you know...
So it's like...
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah.
Somebody make a motion, whatever way you want to go. Need a motion one way or the other.
Well, you know what? I'd rather, I'd rather know what we've got than what we don't have. And right now, we've got Dynegy at 7.7. We know what it's going to be versus, you know, what if something happens, and now, you know, now the residents are going to be a little bit more upset because they're paying more. So I'd rather know what we have than have any uncertainty, and it's only a 12-month contract, which...
That's really the, that's really the big, you hit it right on the head. That's the big question for tonight. Do you want to know the 12 months for sure, or do you want to know what you have for eight months?
And you can get out, too.
Anytime.
And you assume that it's going to drop good in those four months, but the blended average is going to be the same, or roughly the same.
Can I make a motion that we accept, approve the agreement?
Second.
The what? What was the motion?
That's the agreement with...
Just to be clear, that was a motion to enter into a one-year contract with Dynegy?
Yes. Yes.
Motion.
That might be smart.
Discussion. Well, very good. Clerk, call or roll, please.
Trusty Gailey?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Carroll?
No.
Trusty Capino?
Yes.
Trusty Lowry?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Item number five, Mr. Laskowski.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is an agreement to enter into, or an agreement to, with Mooseheart to provide emergency water supply to them. So in the event that Mooseheart would need to take a well out of operation, they would have the opportunity to connect to our water supply in the interim, or if there was any other emergency need for it on their campus, there'd be backflow prevention in place, and this would be an agreement where they would pay for any water that's, that they're using. The location of this interconnect would be just north of Mooseheart and just west of Hilltop. So this item, we had discussed it at the Committee of the Hall meeting, at the July 2 meeting, and at that time, we were in favor of the agreement.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. Clerk, call or roll, please.
Trusty Capino?
Yes.
Trusty Lowry?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Carroll?
Yes.
Trusty Gailey?
Yes.
Item number six, John.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustees may have noticed that the construction project is underway for this 2018 season, so it began on White Oak and Oak, moving north, removing curb. Part of that contract requires us to test the materials that we're using on it, so that's what this engineering agreement would be for. We're testing the strength of the asphalt and the concrete that we're going to be putting back. We received four quotes for this service. The first quote was, came in high at 31,000. One company said that they weren't able to perform the services because they were overworked, and then the other two came in right around 10,000 and 12,000. So in this instance, we're recommending Rubino. They've performed work for us on the last road program and did real well, and did the preliminary testing on this, on this road program, doing the coring of the bases and testing the soils. So it's a staff recommendation to go with Rubino for the construction material testing company in the amount of $10,156.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. And they actually are there taking tests.
They are, yeah.
They take samples and...
Yeah, it's tore up.
Go on with them. Clerk, call or roll, please.
Trusty Gailey?
Yes.
Trusty Carroll?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Lowry?
Yes.
Trusty Capino?
Yes.
Item number seven, John.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is the purchase of a new Freightliner plow and dump truck. So with this item, I'm kind of going to give you a little bit of background on the existing truck, the proposed vehicle, how we made our selection, our plan to use it, and then kind of the purchasing methods that we evaluated before we were going through it. So the existing truck we're going to be replacing is truck number 188. It's an International Dump. It's the biggest, biggest box we have, and we like to use it for water main brakes, hauling stone, basically an all-purpose hauling truck. There's no plow equipment onto it. It's strictly used as a, as a hauling vehicle. It has 205,000 miles on it. It's affectionately known as Big Red, so it does have a big red cab, so that's how we identify it. It was purchased in 2008 with 190,000 miles on it. It currently has 215,000 now. The repairs that we've put into it so far have been on the fuel injection system, and it just started acting up on us last year. The fuel injection went out, and it was stranded on the side of the road. So we repaired that enough to limp it along, and the salvage value of the vehicle now is at about $10,000. We estimate that there's probably about $7,500 to $8,000 worth of more repairs that need to be done to the vehicle, including the replacement of a radiator. So it's kind of our, our opinion that this one's really served us well, and it's kind of run its useful life. So we'd be proposing to look at a new Freightliner vehicle. And the vehicle that we're proposing would be a similar capacity, six to eight cubic yards, so it'd be a big hauling vehicle. But we would ask that this vehicle be outfitted with plow, plow, plow equipment. So whereas Big Red was unable to plow, this vehicle would also have the ability to plow in winter. So what we would do, we'd use this, this truck, substitute it into the rotation, and then use our other dump as a limited, limited-use vehicle. So essentially, we're trying to extend the life of the vehicle we'd be purchasing by using it for operations that don't take as much of a beating on the bed, like hauling stone and such like that, while extending the life of the vehicle that we'd be now using for hauling by not having it plow constantly. So when we chose this Freightliner vehicle, the reason we chose it was because that we've had very good luck with the last two Freightliners trucks that we've purchased. So we purchased one in 2016 and one just at the end of 2017. We haven't had any maintenance issues on them, other than routine preventative maintenance, and we feel it's a safer vehicle, because it provides the driver a higher vantage point, so he can see a wider perspective of the road when he's driving it. So I guess, again, kind of the plan for the vehicle then is we would send Big Red to auction. We believe we could probably get maybe $10,000 for it at auction. We'd like to then substitute our next-largest vehicle, which is truck 170, 186. It's a 2007 International, and have that truck fulfill the duties that Big Red was doing. Now, it has the same capacity as Big Red, but that vehicle can also be used as a plow. So essentially, what we have is a vehicle we'd be using mainly for hauling, but if necessary in winter, if one of our other trucks broke down, we'd be able to plow with that and not have to hire the contractor to come in and substitute those services. It also provides our department with a little bit of flexibility in the future. If another development comes in, and perhaps we do need to add an employee part-time or full-time, this person could hop right into the next vehicle. It's not necessarily going to happen, but it's, it's kind of planning for the future and looking for a backup vehicle as well. When we looked at purchasing, we looked at the purchasing options. We looked at reuse vehicles and then the joint state purchasing program. So when we looked at used vehicles, it was difficult to find comparisons on these bigger trucks with the wing plows. What we were seeing is they were coming from out east. We found two in Minnesota and one in Massachusetts. They were coming with generally over 150,000 miles on them, which is a lot of miles for a vehicle like this, and especially when you don't know the previous use or what, what the maintenance routine was on it in the past. So we were a little leery about that. Those vehicles were going between $75,000 and $80,000 for, for the used vehicle with that mileage. The, the drawback, again, is just not knowing the maintenance of that type of vehicle, and of course, we'd paint it to match our fleet, but that's kind of what we looked at when we were looking at the used vehicles. The, the joint purchasing program is a similar program that we've used in the past. This program is run through the state, and what this process looks like is the state purchases many more vehicles than any individual municipality. So it takes us, it has a big bid and sends out all the trucks that it's going to be purchasing for a given year, asks every dealer in the state to submit a price. So if we're asking Freightliner, if we're purchasing a Freightliner vehicle, the state gets bids from all the Freightliner dealerships in the state, and then gets the best price out of those dealerships. It then has the agreement where it can extend that same price to any municipality who wants to purchase, purchase a vehicle of that type. So in this case, we received, the, the truck cost from Freightliner through that purchase was around $100,000, and that's the first part of the truck. So you purchase the truck, and then you have to outfit it with the box, the plow, and the hydraulics, and all the other components that we need in order to make it an efficient plow truck. That comes out to another $100,000, making total purchase about $200,000. We talked to Monroe, who was the company that does the assembly on, of the plows to the truck, and our street superintendent was able to negotiate a slightly lower price since we were using Monroe in the past. So we asked if, if we're, since we were loyal through this program to them, if they would give us a discount, and they offered us about a $6,000 discount on the truck. So kind of looking at, at all the factors, we took into consideration what we were losing with Big Red going down, how we could use the new truck to the best of our ability and have multiple functions for it. At this time, we feel that utilizing that joint purchasing program through the state is the best route to go. So Public Works is requesting the purchase of the Freightliner plow and dump truck in an amount not to exceed $200,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a couple of questions. So is the trend looking like it's going to be Freightliner? Is that kind of the trend?
Right now, that's what our mechanics are saying they're having better luck with. The Internationals were the hot thing about five years ago, and I think with the higher vantage point that the Freightliners are now manufactured with, a lot more municipalities are kind of looking at those.
How about swapping out parts or swapping plows out and things like that? Looks like we have three Internationals that are the 7400 series and then the seven, or then the 7,000. But, you know, switching out things like that create obsolescence of some of that stuff that we may have that we bought.
Sure. On the, on the trucks themselves, it's, they are what they are kind of thing. A Freightliner mechanic's not going to really work on International. Internationals aren't going to work on Freightliner.
I mean, like snow plows and things that we would swap out, but now the, it might We would swap out, but now the, it might be a different setup or whatever versus having all Internationals or
Sure. The, 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 the assembly on, from what I understand, the assembly of the plow and that is, is the same. So Monroe is the company that puts the plows on all the trucks in our fleet, is my understanding. So that equipment would actually be the same. The installation, maybe the mechanics would have to know how to install a Monroe plow on an International truck and a Monroe plow on a Freightliner truck.
We don't do that anyway, right? We install, we don't install the plows on it.
Yeah, I'm not saying that right. It's not install, but like attach them.
Attach.
Attach and, yeah. So it'd be the same attachment.
Would be the same attachment?
It's the same, I, no.
It was my
It's the same manufacturer of the plow, but not necessarily the same attachment because of the International is different. So I'm assuming the attachment to the vehicle would be different as well.
Well, that's my only concern is by switching trucks like this, and then five years from now, Freightliner isn't hot and it's, whatever, Mack.
Yeah.
Now, where are we going to have parts and plows that don't match up or, you know, we could say
Well, we already have that, don't we? We've got Freightliners. We've got two Freightliners and we got three Internationals.
No, we got six Internationals and two Freightliners, but I'm just saying.
It's a little late for
Well, it's not. I mean, but I'm just, when we decide to switch, that is some issues that comes about.
To your point, Trustee Capino, I, I believe that last time we were here and we were removing the Lowboy, that was, if I remember correctly, either John or Brian Richter, our Public Works superintendent, had said at that time that that was the only truck that didn't have a plow that was compatible with the other plows.
Yeah, I guess, so I may be overcomplicating it, but what I'm, I guess, the way I was looking at it is the plows are all, can be used on any of the trucks. It'd be the nuts and bolts they use to attach to the trucks that might have to be modified.
Oh. Yeah, right. The plows can be used intermixed through whatever truck it is.
Yeah.
Right.
You can take a plow off of an International and put it on the Freightliner, is that what you're saying?
Well, I believe that's the case. You can use the same plow, but the actual point of connection would
What I'm saying is that would all have to be, that's my point, was that in the heat of the battle, you could, if a truck goes down or somebody, oh, swap out a plow or plow goes down at 3:00 in the morning versus if you have these, all these different moving parts now, that they're not going, maybe not match up. That was just my only thought, but we're switching, and then five years from now, we'll switch again and we'll just have, you know.
I think our, our goal is to always look for the best truck, truck for the price. And it's been my understanding from, from Brian and John, when we've talked at the Internationals, the Freightliners, it's about the preference, right now, the Freightliner's good. And I've sat in it. There is a noticeable difference when you sit in it, because you can see the whole plow in front of you, whereas in the International, you can't. So there is a safety factor there. But it's been my understanding from Brian that everything's interchangeable, otherwise we wouldn't look at doing that.
Similar, do we have a comparison?
I believe it was about $5,000 less for the International truck. I, John, in the state bid, was it about $5,000?
Hmm.
Are you getting a red one?
No, no, we're retiring red. It'll be the same color as the other in the fleet.
All right. Any other discussion? Would the clerk color roll, please?
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Capino?
Yes.
Well, that's the end of new business. I have no old business. I have nothing to report. Committee reports. Trustee comments. Mr. Bosco.
Just one quick thing. We had our fireworks down here by the river on July 3, and just wanted to say I thought it went really well. We had just a, a few small tweaks from last year and noticeably adding bathrooms, additional bathrooms this year. And I never saw a line, and that's always a good thing. So I, I think it went really well.
No report.
Fire district, no. Mr. Hannah?
Uh, no report, sir.
Mr. Toth?
Yeah, just a quick update. There's a lot of activity out at the Randall Highlands Development at Orchard and Randall. A lot of motion, the North Aurora Smiles is breaking ground at Ritter and Randall. The OTB at Turfham is wrapping up. The hotel, My Place is looking to open within the next couple of weeks. The Town Homes, I believe we issued permits, and they're going vertical on four of the buildings of the seven at this point in time. And we did get a permit submittal for the Mocha Coffee Shop at 24 South Lincoln Way.
Where's the North Aurora Smiles?